Welcome, everybody. Welcome to the public hearing for April 2024 proposed service changes. My name is Shannon Betson and I work in community outreach at Valley Metro and I'll be helping to facilitate this evening. Joe Gregory, our service planning manager, is going to walk us through the proposed change today. We'll start by giving a brief overview of the service change process, then Joe will talk about proposed change. Or review how to submit feedback in case you haven't done so already, and then we'll open it up for additional questions or comments. For those attending virtually, you can ask a question by selecting the question mark icon on your screen and typing your question in. You're also welcome to type questions or comments directly into the chat box at any time, and I'll read them aloud on your behalf. If you'd like to ask a question aloud, you can select the raise hand icon and I'll give you the ability to unmute. When you're done, please be sure to select lower hand and mute your mic. So we're currently in the middle of our public outreach period, which started on Monday, November 6th and ends on Friday, December 8th. Approval from the Board of Directors is required for any valid Metro operated service and City of Phoenix operated service requires City of Phoenix Council approval. Board review and action is anticipated in January, and if the change is approved, it will go into effect on June 30th. So changes are considered twice a year and those that are approved go into effect each April on October. Service changes are made to address the needs of our ridership throughout our Everest Valley to help people get where they need to go as efficiently and economically as possible. Service changes can originate in different ways, however, they are most often determined through collaboration between Valley Metro and our city partners. The individual cities and towns typically have the best perspective on what their residents need and will make proposals accordingly. Input from the public is always considered and appreciated to help us refine and determine how those changes are going. As I mentioned earlier, the comment period will be open until Friday, December 8th, so there is still time to submit comments or complete the survey. Outreach messaging has gone out via various social media platforms, emails, and physical signs posted at various potentially effective stops. With that, Joe is going to walk us through the proposed change.
Everyone, thank you for attending this public hearing. Of course, we only have one proposed change. The audio is very low. Try to speak more into the microphone. Okay, well, thank you, everyone, for attending this public hearing. So this is the one change would be to eliminate the flash route. And remember, this would run all the way through the end of the school year until June 30th, 2024, even if it were, even if it were to be changed or to be eliminated. This is, thank you. This is primarily a productivity concern. Hopefully, they can hear me a little bit better now. The Tempe's flash ridership has had a dramatic fall since the COVID-19 pandemic. The decrease has been even more dramatic and sustained in the rest of the bus system. In the fiscal year 23, while the bus system ridership overall remained about 50% lower than it was pre-pandemic, the flash was 88% lower. So while one in two riders has remained or returned to the bus system, only one in eight has done so on flash. In 2019, the flash service carried over 200,000 riders, while in 2023, it carried fewer than 30,000. Routes 30, 48, 62, 72, the Tempe Orbit's Mars and Mercury, as well as the light rail and streetcar, all serve portions of the current flash routing. So changing commuting patterns since COVID-19 have lessened the effectiveness and utility of this route. With limited transit service funding available, it is hard to justify continuing to run service that is not efficiently and effectively serving the needs of most riders. So that's why we're coming to you today to talk about this proposed change. It's, we're really looking at a real decrease in productivity in this route and, you know, a decrease in effectiveness. So again, you can share your feedback by December 8th, online through the online survey or an official comment here. Or you can call the customer service or leave a verbal comment at the public input. Voicemail. So again, we are open here to questions and concerns. This is a period for any comments about the proposed change. Anyone is welcome to comment and it will be recorded as part of the presentation as well as added to the survey records. Now, we have representatives here from Valley Metro, City of Tempe, and Arizona State University to answer any questions you may have.
Is, I just want to know, is it timed or just ask what I need to ask?
I have a question about when was the last time that the ridership numbers were taken? I understand that service might, ridership might have decreased post-COVID, but I was curious when the last time numbers were pulled for ridership on the flash.
Just this morning, I pulled numbers for last month, for September, and it's still the lowest performing circulator that we have in the East Valley. It's lower than all the other orbits and it's lower than the Fiesta Buzz and the Downtown Buzz at Mesa. Well, I was doing it a little bit better in September. It's still nowhere near where it was or where we would like to see it.
Was it compared to other Septembers? Like, I know you pulled numbers for September 2023, but were they? I know you pulled numbers for September 2023, but were they pulled for September of last year and then September 2021?
Yeah, it was about 10% higher than September 2022 and 2020 and 2021 were also much lower, but then compared to 2019, it's nowhere close.
One of the questions I have, and I don't know if anyone else is thinking this, but marketing for this route, I've never understood why marketing is not done on campus. Or why, even when this meeting was proposed, I thought it was absolutely fantastic that signs are posted at bus stops for the flash, even right here at Tempe Transit Center. But I cannot for the life of me understand why a ASU route isn't advertised on campus. I've been to events on campus where Valley Metro is invited. They're very good at having a relationship with, like, the housing fair, and that's a two-day event. Valley Metro will come for the first day, half a day, and then we don't see them again. So I don't understand why there's no commitment or marketing person dedicated to ASU, especially when you have routes that go through campus and around campus. So that's always been a question for me because I've even contacted marketing myself to say, hey, why don't you guys come on campus? And I feel like ridership would increase if more students knew about it. Where Valley Metro was part of Welcome Week events, was part of the, I don't know the official name right now, but it's where Dr. Crowe welcomes freshmen out at what used to be Wells Fargo, and my name escapes me of what it is right now. But it's like at least 10,000 to 15,000 students that are actively engaged to receive this information. And where you have all these wonderful, all this wonderful swag that students would gladly take anything free students love. So I'm just at a loss on why there's no marketing on campus specifically to students when it's public transportation that affects them. So I don't know what, I've been here almost two years. I'm one of the community outreach people. So the housing fair you just referenced, I was there yesterday and today for the entire time. So I can't speak to what was done before I got here, but anytime ASU invites me to an event, I come. So, and I'm here, I try to let the kids know about the orbits and the flash that goes around the streetcar now that that's open. So if there are events that I'm missing, I'm more than happy to consider them and try to find whoever organizes those. I'm sure there are ones that I missed just because of, you know, employee turnover and a lot of them are run by students. So the students don't know who to contact year to year and stuff like that. But if there are stuff that you think that we should be at, by all means, let me know and I will be there. I have a couple of questions in the chat.
Cynthia, I'm on the webinar. I use the flash every day.
You're unmuted. You should be able to ask your question now.
Okay, can you hear me now? Hello?
Can you hear me now?
I didn't know if you can hear me. I'm just asking if you can hear me.
Carmen? Carmen, you can ask your question.
Hello? Can anyone hear me?
I can hear you. Okay. So my.
She's typing it into.
Okay, does the speaker?
Yeah, so it does come through the laptop when we speak in here.
Okay, we can do another question in the room and then I'll get their question in the chat.
Hello?
Hi there. So I'm a student here at ASU and I just wanted to come give a couple of comments, just ask a couple of questions. I've been a pre and post-pandemic flash rider. And from what I can tell, to me at least, when I take it in the mornings and the evenings, because I used to commute back and forth to campus, I live over on Harrison Apache. So to me, it seems like ridership has remained pretty similar to what it was prior. I still see a lot of students using it in the mornings and in the evenings. And for me, it's really a big safety concern because I do work up at the stadium to go to a lot of events on the weekdays. And when I'm walking back at night, Lot 59 in that Packard Drive area is very dark and it's very quiet. And honestly, there's usually a lot of crime in the area. So for me, having that bus accessibility is really important for safety, and I know a lot of other peers are really uncomfortable walking there as well. And I do want to point out as well that Lot 59 is historically, you know, for students who can't afford to park in the more expensive on-campus parking garages, Lot 59 is the only option. And if we're going to be taking away this flash service, we are going to be disenfranchising these marginalized students from accessing higher institutions, that accessing higher education. And so my question for you is, what alternatives could there be as opposed to the flash to getting to campus? Because at this point, if you're not gonna, if you're gonna take away the safety aspect and routes like the orbit and other city bus lines that you mentioned, don't run down Packard Drive to McAllister and onto campus. What are the alternative options? And then another comment I wanted to point out, and I think you brought this up as well with the marketing aspect. Many students don't use flash because they're confused. A lot of people believe that the flash bus line possibly means. And this is because while the city buses that are used aren't labeled as free, they have fair, like fair rate markets and that sort of thing. I know there's one flash bus that like circulates campuses, it's free and all that stuff, but it really is quite confusing and a lot of people don't understand how the system works. And I'd like to point out as well that I think there needs to be more driver training, honestly. A lot of students did not want to save the line because they were either left at a bus stop because the driver didn't stop for them or the bus that was scheduled didn't show up at the time. So those are a couple of comments I wanted to share with you all, but I'd love some feedback and your input on what's next. I'd really love to see the flash bus preserved. It's a great resource for Tempe and the community, and I think it's really important for us students. Thank you.
Lot 59 at all?
Yeah, so Lot 59 historically has been probably twice the size it used to be, and so.
Sorry. It's okay.
Yeah, so Lot 59 historically has been almost twice the size it used to be. Is it working out? I'll say it again. So Lot 59 was historically twice the size it used to be. And with the future Novus District plan, I don't know if everybody's kind of seeing that, the way ASU is kind of building out is what we call is the parking lots a future building site. So the first site that went away was Lot 59 north of Rio Salado. That's currently now where the State Farm Building has been built. And then we have the hockey arena that was just built on a portion of Lot 59. And then as we move forward, more and more of Lot 59 is gonna, is gonna go away. And so I think that's another reason why I think the ridership is continuing trending downwards is because the space that used to be there is just no longer there and it's gonna continue to get smaller and smaller, less availability for people to park with Lot 59 as the new buildings are developed and built in that area. And then Sam, I think you want to talk about the different routes that go around that area?
Sure. So currently, we've recently, oh my gosh, two years ago now, we rerouted the orbit, Earth Route, served Lot 59 north of, I should say, Long Rio Salado, and we also have the Route 48 that travels through there as well. And then we have the Route 72 on rural road. So I know those routes don't quite circulate in the same pattern as the flash, but I wanted to make sure that everyone here is aware of the other transit options in the area as well. There are a couple of maps. We have transit maps up there as well. I'd be happy to, you know, go through that in detail with anyone.
Don't worry about streetcar.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I forgot to mention the streetcar as well has had a huge, you know, we, we've seen a huge, you know, increase above the projections, the streetcar ridership since it opened. I mean, there's days when streetcars are crush loading capacity and we're really hoping that we can increase frequency on the streetcar in the coming months. Currently, it operates about every 20 minutes. We're hoping to get that to every 15, so we think that will help. And someone mentioned how the flash route had changed. You know, previously, the flash route had circulated the entire campus. Currently, it basically connects Lot 59 to student, or sorry, the University Services Building by McAllister. You know, certainly that's had an impact on the ridership, but we have seen streetcar really outperform the projections that we had. So that's something that we're excited about as well.
As far as what's coming as well, I'd just like to mention that we see from an ASU perspective and servicing the community, I think with the advancements in technology, especially with Valley Metro and their fare system, there's a desire to really more tightly integrate those systems. So it is easier and more convenient for our community to access both information and the ability to utilize any benefits that especially the university provides to students. So the goal is really to make sure that we're creating a system that's performing well and looking at these historical routes that are underperforming and really put the resources behind where they can maximize that benefit, but really integrate with the technology. So I think there are some exciting things, things coming as well as being able to better communicate how streetcar works and how we can get across campus and use the different levels. So JC's point as well, the landscape of the campus is changing dramatically. So what used to be considered really kind of fringe parking and remote areas is really changing and entire dynamic of the campus is changing. So we're trying to get ahead of that. The comment was made about being invited to campus. Our team would be more than welcome to sit down with individuals and have conversations, and we have task force that work on particular parking and transit opportunities and engagements. So if you want to, we'll get your information after this, so we'd be happy to have you on our Intrans advisory board.
So real quickly, I just have a few comments in the chat box here. So from Brianna, or I'm sorry, Brenna. Um, so Brenna says, I agree with the marketing question. Many of the students on campus do not know the route exists, let alone how it works. This route is not advertised to ASU students, and if it was, it would likely increase ridership. From Cynthia, she says, I've been using the flash for many years in the morning and evening to get to work. I park over in Lot 59 and the building I'm working is very far. I'm also 68 years old and not having the flash would really impact older employees. We need to keep this or an alternative because no rope goes down McAllister. Cynthia also mentions that streetcar doesn't go anywhere near the east side of campus. And Brenna mentions that the streetcars don't longer be free for students and faculty, making it much less accessible than flash. And I would just like to say that the streetcar is currently still free for at least another few months, I would imagine. So please feel free to jump on. Okay, I'm gonna attempt to unmute Carmen one more time. Carmen, you can ask your question now.
Okay, so. Here's my question, right? And I'm not just gonna talk about just the flash bus, but just for like many routes in general. My question is, is why isn't it like a plan to not only make the bus free, but more accessible to elderly and the disabled? Because at the end of the day, like Ms. Cynthia said, you know, I feel like a lot of routes and everything are being cut or moved. And I just feel like that that's kind of messed up that it's being like that because, you know, people need access as well as, you know, just the point of just the bus being free because like a lot of times the fare box doesn't work and I mean, because I, I've been keeping up with Transit Back East and they're doing that proposal plan to not only keep on running it free for a certain amount of time, but to make it into just the thing to do every day. So thank you.
But thank you, Carmen. This is Sam with the City of Tempe. Yes, thank you for your comments. You know, I mentioned a couple of things in the context of fairs. So we are embarking upon a regional fair study right now. I believe, I'm sure there's gonna be a public facing component of that. But more broadly, I want to mention, so while we do have several free services in Tempe, you know, the orbit primarily, our largest free system, the fairs that we do collect on our buses and light rail do bring in several million dollars each year. And that certainly goes back into our fund and helps us provide more service. So it's really a balance, you know, if we were to hypothetically, you know, open our entire system to be free fare, unfortunately, we'd be in a, into a position where we have to find savings elsewhere. You know, and that would probably look like reduction in service on some of our routes, maybe our hours of service or frequency. So fairs, you know, it's a small portion of our revenue that we're able to bring in, but certainly is significant enough. You know, it really does help us provide the services that we provide today. So I just, I wanted to make that comment. Thanks.
Yeah, and also with our new fare system, there will be fare capping and another, a number of other kind of inducements and certainly people over 65 will be getting a reduced fare on the new system as well.
I just have one more question in the chat, then I'll pass it. This is also from Cynthia. She says, is the issue that the flash buses are so large? Wait, is the issue that the flash buses so large that gas is a concern? If the flash buses are not getting filled up, why not switch the flash to a smaller bus like the orbit buses and keep the route?
Thank you, Cynthia. It's really a great question. This is Sam again with the City of Tempe. You know, it's, I understand it's counterintuitive. Actually, we really don't see much of a difference in terms of the operating costs between the larger flash buses and the smaller orbit buses. By a long shot, our largest expenditures are the labor to operate and maintain the vehicles. So, you know, it's a great thought. We use smaller buses on the orbit to afford us more maneuverability in the neighborhoods. But certainly, the cost of operating those buses is really not much different at all than what we paid to operate the flash. So thanks for that.
Hi, everyone. My name is Roshab. I'm a senior at ASU. First and foremost, I want to thank everyone for allowing us to be here and thank your students for showing up and making it worth it. I want to pull a quote from Mr. Porter from his ASU bio. And he says, "My goal is to provide the most sustainable access possible there as a state university, whether it's by bus, bike, walk, or drive." Now, my question is, given ASU's commitment to sustainability, how do you justify cutting down public transportation, which is the most sustainable form of transportation, especially with the number of kids who drive to school? And who could be saving money on those parking and maintenance costs by going to school through bus? Or like especially through the flash system, which goes from McAllen service is the most, the easiest way to get to most buildings on campus? And probably the most efficient way of saving money for students as well?
Yeah, sure. So sustainability, we really, ASU does a lot for sustainability. And unfortunately, one of the things that also is sustainable is the funding. So ASU has a certain amount of funding that they spin towards sustainability. And the way that ASU parking and transportation actually receives their funding is we don't receive any student fees. We don't receive any fees from the state. We don't receive any funding from the university. All the funding actually comes from people who buy, buy a parking permit. So that's, that's where the funding comes to be able to support these sustainable transportation modes. And the largest sustainable transportation mode is our inner campus shuttles. So for example, our inner campus shuttles, which go between all four campuses, that ridership is continue to progress upwards of close to 900,000 rides. And so that's what I'm looking at is where do we get our best cost benefit? Should we spending it towards something where we can get a cost per ride for those buses that's close to $9 to $12 a ride? Or the cost per ride for the flash right now is around $30 to $40 a ride, just for that small commute? So they're basically going one mile for $30, or we're going 30 miles for $12. And so that's the way I've had a look at it is we've got a small pot of money that we use for our sustainable transportation. And if we want to be able to take and utilize that money, it's the best way that we can. And so that's why we're looking at it. We're, we're looking at it, what, where do we get our biggest bang for our buck? And right now, the ridership has dropped so dramatically and it hasn't, and we don't see it increasing. Because of multiple reasons, the, the justification and the growth of parking lots has tended to change that utilization model. And then also all the different routes that have kind of come in and around it have also changed that model that we've seen. And so we want to make sure that we're providing the best transportation options to the students as possible so that we get, so we can use that and not have the sustainable mode that is costing five to 10 times more than what other sustainable modes are costing.
Can I add to that, if you see?
That's a, it's a great question. I think something that would honestly love to work with you on and other students and would work with student leadership in the past and other students is how do we maximize that most sustainable transportation mode, which is transit? So we do subsidize the new paths and it really is a goal to see an increased utilization of that. We need to work with groups and individuals to figure out how we match the scheduling and the location needs of the community to get from one point to another. As JC or someone I think indicated earlier on, the original purpose for the flash and how it operated was to move people from remote parking, which they still had to use a single occupancy vehicle typically, which is not ultimately a sustainable way to come to campus, to then get into the inner campus. We'd love to really put those resources, find other ways to subsidize access to the entire transportation network and be able to help you get from, whether it's if the light rail to the streetcar or some other method or orbit to get into campus and to get around, as well as other micro mobility solutions. So sustainability is definitely top of mind and we are looking for as many options as we can to put people around campus. It really does adapt to that productivity and how we can maximize those options.
Can anybody, can everybody hear me? Wonderful. Hello, I'm John and I am another ASU student, but post-grad, post-grad student though. I have a, I have a comment and a question. First.
First, or first, I have the, I have, I have definitely seen the, the reduced ridership on, on the, on the flat, on the flash. And number two, connecting to that, I am, know that we talked that the streetcar has absorbed the ridership possibly and also lot fifty-nine reduced size. But I've also seen micro mobility offerings such as the Suedos or the ASU Live Safe Micro Transit at night, or the paid to, you pay to use Zen, Zen Gov accounts taking students around. Has, has that been, those micro mobility services been considered in what happens during ridership with flash?
No, that's some, some really good observations. And that's something that ASU has actually been working since twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen with all the micro mobility companies and trying to create areas for them to use. And then just this year, we're actually allowed personally owned micro mobility device, electric micro mobility devices on campus. So previously, they were banned, and now they're no longer banned. And ASU is actually working on a project to provide uh places where people can park their electric skateboards, their electric scooters, electric bikes, and then also allowing them in our current, our current bike valets and our, our bike storage areas. And then we're even working on uh charging stations for electric scooters and electric bikes. So that, you're absolutely right. That is something else that we've seen a dramatic increase in. Unfortunately, it's also come a decrease in our bike ridership. So we're seeing a, a boat split right now. So that's what we're actually seeing all throughout our transportation system is there's a lot of different boat splits happening that haven't occurred in the past. And again, I think that's, you're absolutely right. I think another reason why there's less people riding is pre-COVID. We used to have people that would park bikes in our parking garage and our bike cages that we had built in there. They'd park their cars off in their bikes and ride in. And now with the electric scooters, electric skateboard, they're so much smaller and more compact. You'll probably see a lot of people just hopping on their scooters and skateboards and just riding into campus instead of taking the flash on it. So you're right, there's all new uh micro transportation options that are available post-COVID than there were pre-COVID. And I think that's also playing a part of the reduction in ridership. But it's also something that ASU is trying to embrace wholeheartedly. And again, we're trying to get students in and around campus as sustainable and as practical as possible.
Thank you, Sal.
Yeah, thank you.
Couple questions in the chat here. This is from Cynthia. She says, "If money is an issue, has Valley Metro tried to partner with ASU as the university has pushed for faculty, staff, and students to use alternative methods to get to campus and not use a personal vehicle?"
Yeah, I think the, the flash route itself is a partnership between ASU and Valley Metro. Um, ASU basically pays for the, the bulk of it, and Valley Metro operates and runs it, uh, along with the rest of our East Valley uh bus routes. Uh, but what we do, I mean, I mean, we, we do want to work as closely as we can with ASU and especially, you know, as we're, as we're kind of rethink some of the U-PASS and some of the other um kind of ways to get around. Um, yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a big partner. I mean, there's what, eighty thousand students here, right, right in, in Tempe? And uh, they all need to, to find somewhere to find ways to get around. And we want to be a part of that solution too.
One of my concerns is that, is how we're using transit resources efficiently. And then when you cut a route like flash, um, other riders don't necessarily see the benefits of that. It's like the people who are currently, I know thirty thousand riders is not necessarily a lot. At the same time, you know, where, where are those riders going to go next? Where are they, you know, where are they going to park? How are they going to get downtown? And then when you talk about, you know, using transit resources efficiently, it's like, well, where does that want to go that next? Because they're not really going to see the benefits back from them. And I heard suggestions from one person. I don't know about like what the parking situation is like, or how many spots you have and how you're, you're using them. But one suggestion I heard was having like a flash route that would go to a place like the Tempe Library or a place in Central Tempe where people could actually park outside of the downtown area and still have access to ASU. So maybe that parking lot specifically may not be useful anymore. But are there other places nearby where you could still have five, ten minute access to ASU? And that could potentially help reduce traffic and it also help service those people? So that's just kind of my thoughts.
Yeah, I can say that we do have an orbit that, that does go down to the, um, to the Tempe Library where people could use that. Uh, and that is, that's another free route that, that comes right, right to here to TTC and then goes down to the library too. Uh, but yeah, I mean, we're always looking at these, like Shannon was, was saying early in the presentation, you know, we do two, two changes a year because we're, we're constantly reviewing all the, all the, the, the bus ridership, the productivity, you know, where people are going, where people are coming from, and trying to, you know, respond to new developments or to, to just ways that, new ways that people are, are getting around. So uh, that, that's something that we're always trying to kind of dial in. It's never going to always be, be perfect. But uh, we're, we're trying to uh make sure that we're, you know, spending the public money in the, in the most efficient way possible.
This question is from Brenna. She says, "If the flash route is eliminated, will there be alternative routes implemented to aid students, staff, and faculty to get around campus? I park in the Packard Garage and the flash thinks getting around campus is much more accessible for me and others that park in that structure."
So, so that, that's a great question. And again, I just want to thank everyone for, for your feedback because these specific challenges are, are exactly what can help us fine tune, um, you know, a, a solution. So um, the Patrick structure is served by Route Forty-eight, um, connects to uh Rio Solado, McCar, Packer Drive, the Tempe Transit Center. Um, unfortunately, you know, you would have to transfer to another route that's a transit center um to get somewhere else on campus. Um, but there's other routes in the area too. Um, the Earth is, is nearby on Rio Solado, um, and the seventy-two on uh, on Scottsdale, Scottsdale Road. So we're, um, rural road, rural, rural Scottsdale, sorry. Um, so, um, yeah, so, uh, you know, um, not knowing exactly where you're heading to, um, but certainly appreciate the concern and, and the, uh, the comments.
Okay. I have a few comments here from Sultana. She says, "I am, am also an ASU student and usually take the flash from right in front of my apartment. I hope you will not eliminate the service without implementing an alternative or better transportation system in the area, especially considering the students' accessibility. Also, ASU parking is something that is out of range for the students." Um, she also says, "Orbit does not maintain a schedule. It usually takes longer than walking if you wait for one of the Orbit's, especially considering Arizona heat during summer for those who don't drive or can't drive."
Well, I can say that the Orbit's do keep a, keep a schedule. Um, I mean, there, there may be times where, where it's running late, but it's, it certainly is uh meant to keep a schedule too.
Uh, thanks, Joe. I, I would just add to that. So certainly, we, we do schedule all of the Orbit's that come into downtown uh every fifteen minutes, uh six days of the week, and every thirty minutes on Sundays. So the Orbit, as Joe mentioned, uh, you know, it, it is a scheduled service, just like the flash. I will say, one of the things that we are working on is improving our on-time performance. So we made some schedule changes uh back in October, specifically to the Mars route, uh, which may be one of the ones that passes by your apartment if you're on the south end of the flash route. Um, so we're waiting, you know, we're monitoring that data to see um if it helps with the schedule adherence. But certainly, they are scheduled and, and our goal is to um, you know, help promote them to run on time through a number of different mechanisms. So uh, thanks for bringing that to our attention though.
I, I just had a question about like the, the physical buses. So when the route is eliminated, are you going to repurpose those buses for a new route? Or are they just going to be decommissioned? And uh, also in general, uh, where would the funding be going if this route were eliminated? Because it seems like it's just being eliminated. And I don't really see a plan for like what this would be used after. Thank you.
I can speak towards the buses. Yeah, anytime we eliminated a route, uh, we, we put that back into the pool of vehicles for all the other routes that we run. And especially the flash, I mean, those are forty foot vehicles. So those can go out on basically any other route that we have in the system on the seventy-two or forty-eight or, or any of those. Um, so those, those will just be added to, to the, the triple fleet that we have. We'll probably just, you know, take the ones that are wrapped and take that wrapping off. But otherwise, those are, those would be good to go on almost any other route that we have.
Yeah, from a, from an allocation standpoint, um, we're constantly looking at how to allocate funds to various different resources. One that has come to mind, I think, was mentioned earlier in relation especially, and a concern that I have is with the implementation of a fare on the streetcar, how we're going to manage that from a student utilization perspective? And how we can partner as an institution with Valley Metro to integrate that into the U-PASS program and make that affordable for students? So could those funds be potentially allocated towards that to lessen that burden? It's something that we're thinking about and entering into some discussions on. So the hope is that we can maximize it across the entire network and more broadly utilize it as opposed to that one single resource. But again, uh, welcome comments from the community and continued partnership, especially from students on ASU, for us to help us make those decisions.
Thank you. I just want to say, I really appreciate everyone's feedback so far. I just had a couple of questions to follow up on, on kind of what's been said around the alternatives and the bus routes in the area. And just to recognize that the stretch between Packard and McAllister is still a two mile stretch of land. And to not have that bus route there is really a detriment to the students in order to access those classes. And still from the parking lot, which I understand ASU has those future changes coming up. But the reality of it is us students will still be living without that access and that transit. And so my question too is with those routes that you mentioned, like the seventy-two and the other city buses, as well as Orbit Earth, uh, the city buses don't have the same frequency that the flash currently has, which is really important for us. And Orbit Earth doesn't necessarily go directly down from Lot Fifty-nine uh onto campus and into the Tempe Transit Center right away where we needed to go. And so my question is, is there a maybe potential plan or way we could find an alternative where maybe not a flash bus, but like a Mars orbit uh could run up McAllister and still fulfill that stretch of land that needs, needs to be covered for students? Um, but that doesn't necessarily have to have the same infrastructure and amount of funding as the flash currently has.
Thank, thank you for that. So I, I can say that, you know, as of today, we, we don't have a mitigation in place. However, you know, the, the purpose of these meetings is to hear feedback and ideas like this from you all. It's certainly, we can consider that suggestion and, and any others that you have. But again, I thank everyone for your comments. I know we received a lot of comments online so far. So um, it's all really great feedback and we, some, something that we can look into. Um, of course, you know, changing an, an orbit route also requires a very significant amount of outreach that we, that we would go through as well, similar to this. Um, but yeah, uh, you know, it's potentially a possibility.
Comments? This is from Cynthia. She says, "If you want to sell the idea of using public transportation to ASU faculty, staff, and students, it needs to be reasonable and not having to transfer, transfer to multiple buses. I used to take the Orbit from the Tempe Library, transfer to Transportation Center to take an Orbit bus. That's which would take an hour for me to get to work and back home, and I live in Tempe. The Orbit bus used to go down McAllister, and it really served the east side of campus. Now the Orbit buses go up to the light rail farther from campus." I have another comment from Sultana. She says, "I think many people did not know that the flash is free and out. I think rather than eliminating the service, the officials can consider spreading the word because Orbit gets really crowded and full most of the time."
Thank you for those comments.
All right, um, so my question actually kind of goes along with his, and I thank you for your response again. Um, could we have a, a mitigation plan in, in action in force before we get rid of the flash, uh, flashlight? Is that something that's possible? Just to kind of cover that stretch between Packard and McAllister?
Uh, thanks for that quote. Thank you for that. Um, it's certainly something that we'll discuss and, and consider. Appreciate the comment. I certainly can't make a commitment right now, but understand the importance. And it's something that we'll go back and discuss. Thanks, Dan, for running the mic around.
Uh, going back to my earlier comment, I actually am very impressed with what everyone has to say. I always felt like I was the only one calling Sam. Asking what is going on. So um, I'm just very, very happy to hear all of these wonderful comments from other writers. One of the things that I will say, and I really hate to beat a dead horse, Shannon. So uh, I understand that you are the Community Outreach Coordinator. I could not remember the name of the event, and then I remembered it. So it was Passport, was the event on campus where there was someone from Valley Metro that was there, and they only tabled for half of the time. When that happens, it just looks very disjointed and like there's a lack of care. Like, I just feel like when you commit to be at an event, it needs to be for the whole duration. Um, I will say, I feel like right now, Valley Metro has put riders in this like rock and a hard place because it is November and we're going into the holiday season. We're going into finals. And you place this upon us where there's this, guess what? This route might go away. And I just feel like we're not given a fair shot because there are so many students that take this bus. I understand there are some people that feel like there's been a decrease in ridership. I've just been impressed by like, I've never seen so many people on the flash. One time I was on the bus, there were twelve people. I didn't even know what to do with myself. And so, and one time like five people got on at one stop. I'm a city girl. I've lived in New York, Washington DC, and I grew up in Los Angeles. Obviously, the ridership isn't like those cities, but the fact that I'm seeing multiple people standing at bus stops. And the one stop that I'm very surprised to see a lot of is at um the apartment building Apollo. And I don't know if that apartment community is telling their residents about the flash. But when I say marketing and advertising and getting out in the community and telling people about the flash, yes, I would like it where we're on campus. But why hasn't someone taken the initiative to go to all of these apartment communities that the flash drives through? You're going through Park Place, you're going through Apollo, you're going through um nine twenty-two, Carmen, they changed her name, it was something else. But anyway, I'm just saying that there's so much opportunity for Valley Metro to utilize, um, to be like, there is information to riders, and it's just not happening. And I don't know if it's because Valley Metro is like quasi-government and you can't partner with businesses to make a bigger impact where the information is also available to businesses where the flash goes down. I'm just at a loss on how we're here at the end of the fall semester. And I'm just very nervous about this route being taken away because there is a void where this bus not running down McAllister would be very detrimental. So I'm going to say what no one else has said. Don't get rid of the flash.
Just one, one thing I just want to make sure everyone understands again. This would, even if it were to be decided to eliminate the flash, it wouldn't run through the end of the school year and through, eh, to June of next year.
I wrote it down. But the fact is, like, I feel like if we were given more of um, like a beginning of the fall semester, we're all hands- we're all hands on deck, pull out all the stops, we're marketing and everything, you know, like Shannon's on campus. She's at apartment community. She's doing everything at the beginning of fall semester. She's at move-in for apartments. She's there for every single event, welcome week where there's ten plus thousand students. And then if the ridership still fails, then we have nothing to complain about except we've done, like Valley Metro has done everything they could. But I just don't feel like everything has been done from all points. And that's the issue that I'm having. And I'm sure not the only one.
And I just, I hope everyone just remembers too, that we have a hundred and six routes in the Valley Metro system with nineteen member agencies. And there's only one Shannon, so she can't be everywhere all at once.
But I can help Shannon. I have an arsenal of people on campus that can help when you decide if I'm on campus.
Yeah, I just want to add on to her comments. I think another thing that like she was trying to bring up was the fact that we found out about these changes coming into effect last week, right? And so the, I'm understanding the period of time in which public can like make comments on this only extends to December eighth. Now, having a month or even less than a month to speak on something that could impact so many students, I think that's just a little too, I think we need more time than that, right? And I understand like there's a bureaucratic process here. I understand that there's a lot of stuff that goes into this. But I think like our frustration here is that we didn't really get much of a chance to really express our opinion, express how this is going to impact us. There are a lot of students here who wanted to be here, but couldn't make it because there's finals going on, there's law school stuff going on, there's all sorts of things going on, right? So I, I think we'd appreciate if there's a bigger like period of time in which the public could express their opinions and their concerns.
So the comment period is only open for a month, but in reality you can send comments to the input inbox at any time. And I'll send them to the city or to planning or to whoever it relates to. So if somebody comments on this on December ninth, it'll still get to all the people that review it. So it is technically closed. We closed the survey, but that input email address is always open for any non-related flash questions, issues, whatever, you can send it anytime.
But no decision be made on the, on this issue.
January, I believe, is when the board will vote on things.
Thank you.
I don't know if it, well, obviously there have been other routes that have changes or have been canceled. But has this turnout been good compared to other route initiatives or changes? I'm just hoping that all of us being here in person and online, that this is an impactful moment for Valley Metro in the city of Tempe. Where, you know, we're very serious about this because this can affect a lot of, not just the people that are here, but people who weren't able to come because a lot of students take classes at night after five o'clock. So I just hope that us being here and online is something that the board will consider come January.
This has been our highest turnout event since COVID before, I think. I mean, we, we just eliminated two reps on, on the West Valley in this past service change. And we didn't get anyone to show up to, to, to the public outreach. I mean, it's just, it's really hard to, to, to get people to come out to things these days. So I, I applaud all of you and thank you overall for putting in your comments and, and, you know, all the comments that have come in so far into the online survey. And yeah, encourage your friends, any other riders that you see out on the flash, just encourage them to, to put in any comments that they can online or, or call us as the customer service or, you know, any of the ways that, that we've put into the webinar.
Comment in the chat. This comment is from Cynthia. She says, I agree. Please do not terminate the flash service. Advertise it more, ask ASU Department of Transit to advertise more, post at the flash stops that the service is free. Every year, ASU boasts about the increase of student enrollment and there's a generation of students who have never been on a bus that would be encouraged to use the service if they are told. I can't afford to park in the Tyler or rural road structures, which is why I park at lot fifty-nine. This reporter, Mr. Dwyer, please don't ignore the needs of the ASU students, faculty and staff. We need either Valley Metro and/or ASU to have a route established on McAllister to assist the people who are parking at lot fifty-nine and Packard Structures to replace the flash if it is terminated.
I was just going to say, I think ASU is in a pretty position as a, as a, as a robust public transportation network around it. And I feel like that should be more of a selling point of encouraging students to come to ASU and not something they happen to learn after being at ASU and then get confused about, you know what I mean? I feel like it should be one of the main selling points of the university that we have this robust transportation network and that should make people want to come here. And not like two years and be like, oh, I see that flash bus going around. I wonder what that is. So that's not really a question, but yeah.
Do you have any information about what's going to happen with the lot fifty-nine? You said that the parking is disappearing. So I mean, is it, is it even going to be there twelve months from now? Or do you have any idea what's going to happen? Because like, are we trying to save relatively not even have a purpose a year from now? So I think the best place to go look is if you go to page, what is it? Notice@asu.edu. And that talks about the whole notice of development that's appearing in the lot fifty-nine area as far as the timeline. They speak to that, but it's kind of dependent on whether they can have developers purchase the land. So that's, that's not necessarily something that I'd get a timeline to, or ASU give a timeline to. It's based on with the land development. But yeah, notice@asu.edu, I believe, that tells the whole scenario what that, what, what's happening with that area. Because one possibility would be to delay a minute. Like if you are going to eliminate the flash, maybe just delay it for a year or two and allow it to continue to serve the purpose. It's just a compromise.
In case you're not aware, the Novus project is like twenty, twenty-five year long project.
Yeah.
So there is a really nice timeline on there.
Yeah.
Just so you know what buildings are popping up and the progression of Tempe.
So it's, I'm saying that that lot is going to be there, you know, a year or two more years, maybe, maybe we delay, delay this change and allow people to continue to park there and that gives more time for people to adjust and, and change their, you know, change the situation. I'm just saying it's just because as long as people are able to park there, maybe we want to continue to serve that, at least until something does get built there.
Yeah, I just want to add that in terms of advertising, I feel like more focus should be put on like how much money people will save. Because sustainability is kind of like an abstract concept. But if you say like the U-Pass is cheaper than a parking permit and that's not even including your parking and insurance and gas and all that. That's like something tangible that like affects people and they'll be more motivated by that, I feel like. And also I'd like further comments afterwards about the U-Pass plan. Wants to stick around.
Way to maximize it.
If, if anyone has any other thoughts, we'll stick around for a little while. And I just, I honestly want to thank everyone who, like as Candace alluded to, came out here and showed up here in person as well as online. I, I really mean it when I say it's helpful to hear how our proposals, and again, these are proposals at this point, will impact people if, if the changes are being implemented. So I, I, I truly want to thank everyone for coming out tonight.
Yes, thank you, everyone. It's been crazy hearing all these comments.